Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as citizens of Walton County and conduct the business of this great county. We ask that you give us wisdom and guidance in every decision that we make. We also pray for our leaders in Washington at this particular time, Lord. Please give them wisdom in the decisions that they will make in the coming days. And we ask as we go forward in this meeting, Lord, that you will remind us that pridefulness and boastfulness is a sin. And that you will ask us to always be humble in everything we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is saience. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stafford, would you might come forward?
That's brutal.
Remember my prayer, gentlemen?
Yes, please do remember them prayers. Pre-season.
The fact of the matter, you are dressed in the tide.
It is. It's about like a pig. You put lipstick on a gator, end of the day, he still gonna be a gator.
I think we need to get a couple pictures. Ms. Dottie, are you out there?
He's ready.
You got your camera?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Buddy, I know you're collateral damage in this things, but you can come forward too.
Oh, no.
Keep the faith, boys. Keep the faith. Wellmer?
Ma'am?
Before you go back to the office, will you be sure and take a bath?
I will. I will. Yes, ma'am. And you know, it took me fifty-four years to put an old saying I've heard all my life. You can't fix stupid, you can.
Okay, yo, call the order, our regular scheduled board meeting?
I don't know. We can do it after that.
First thing up is the, any additions or deletions to the... Consent agenda?
Proud to say there are no additions or deletions.
They are not. Okay. Well, entertain a motion to approve or consent agenda.
No move. Don't you have to approve the regular agenda first?
I have to read the regular agenda first.
Well, I'm sorry. I am out of order, ain't I?
Regular agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Go back up to public comments.
Is there any public comments at this time? Uh, I see a hand in the back. Mr. Osborne.
Good morning. Alan Osborne, for the record. Last BCC meeting, I brought you guys a package, and I know you didn't have time to read at the last BCC meeting. But I brought all of you guys a package. And some interesting things have happened since then about that information. I brought you information that says in a county report from your staff that an area is out of compliance. I brought you information and a copy of the ordinance and what the ordinance says. And I caught, I brought a copy of the findings and what the DCA said, and now the DEO. But an interesting thing happened. I can't see my minutes, so I don't know how long ago. An interesting thing happened this last, since the last BCC meeting is you enforced the ordinance. And you enforced it with a stop work order. Now, whether that, whether that stop work order or whatever was politically motivated, you guys as commissioners are gonna have to decide that, not me. I think it was. But that's irrelevant. If the rules were broken, then it should have been enforced. And if that rule was that the sand wasn't the right color, and that's what the ordinance said, then you should have stopped it. And you did. Irregardless of why the reasons it was filed, you should have stopped. Now, for ten years, I've asked you to enforce my ordinance, and here it is. And I want somebody to tell me at what point the threshold of ordinance enforcement gets engaged. Because if you enforce one, you gotta enforce them all. And I just don't see a reason why you don't have to enforce them all. And you've set a precedence now by enforcing that. And it would be discriminatory for somebody to identify something to you. It's one thing not to enforce something that you don't know is being violated. That's one, one condition that can exist when there's not a violation. Because you didn't know to enforce it. But in my case, you know. How'd I know you know? Because your staff report says so. And you always, isn't that what you say, Sarah? You gotta rely on staff? So if that's the truth, and the staff says it's out of compliance, can I get a direction to code enforcement to go put a stop work order on my, my ordinance? Because the conditions of the ordinance aren't being met. Mr. Chapman, you spend all those years in law enforcement, and you're always telling me that's what, that's what you know. Really? Isn't it the right thing to do to enforce these rules fairly, just across the board? And if the rule was broken in that other case, it was the right thing to do to enforce it? But, you know, I'm having a hard time understanding. And I wish you guys could explain to me how you get a rule enforced. Because it appears if you're an ex-commissioner and you call them on a rule enforced, you can get it. But I think that should apply to anybody. Like I said, it doesn't matter who called it in. If the rule was broken and you enforced it, you did the right thing. If it wasn't, if somebody told them they could continue like they were, then y'all have to deal with that. Can anybody up there give me an answer as to why I can't get my ordinance enforced? How about you, Mr. Davis? Shouldn't it be fair?
Mr. Osborne, if you've got a code enforcement complaint you want to file, file the code enforcement complaint, and we'll start the process.
I've done that years ago, and I've come up here.
I've been here a year. Do it again, so I can take a look at it. We'll start that process.
Do the same process again?
I'd be happy to. Be happy to take a look at it and start. Now, I'll get my staff.
After ten years, I'm gonna start over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll be there to fill it out this afternoon.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, move forward. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into the agenda items, I want to say a big thank you on behalf of admin for Wanda and Melissa. And particularly Melissa and the hard work she did in our budget process. It went very smooth. We appreciate the cooperation from all involved. Thank you, commissioners, for your support of what they did and the information they presented you to have a smooth budget process. It's very meaningful when you hear and read around the state, things that go on in other places. So from our perspective, we want to say thank you to those folks, and thank you to the commissioners.
Nice to know that Melissa's better looking than her father, you know?
Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda is an update from the Florida Forest Service. I believe Mr. Bruce Smith is here. Anything you want to say or add?
Good morning. Not a whole lot of change here. We've had a lot of rainfall through the last couple of years. Have enabled us to help out west with their wildfires. Some of the younger people that are able to go out and help with those fires. So far, this month of September, we've received in our North Walton Station, a little over eight inches. South Walton, about three point three. And so, as I was saying earlier, everything is pretty much intact. And, I'm sorry.
I was just waiting till you finished.
Yeah, I'm through.
Okay. I just learned this morning that he is not gonna be with us as of December. I want to say, on my behalf, what a pleasure it has been working with him through the years. He and I have spent a many hour in the AOC through various storms. He's always been a pleasure to work with, no matter what. He's got a smile on his face. And I know he's got good people working with him, but I'm gonna miss you.
Hey, all right. Well, I'm gonna miss y'all too. Been a good working relationship throughout the county for the last eleven years that I was stationed here. And I'm pretty much leaving someone with the knowledge, and that would be Mr. Walter Bauer. Walter, would you please stand? He'll know, he'll know what's going on until Tallahassee appoints another FAS. And it's been a pleasure.
And I learned this, I learned this morning that he's Sarah and Robert's son.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, if you will, for the clerk, would you state your name into the record?
I'm sorry. Bruce Wayne Smith.
All right, thank you. All right, any...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just remind everybody as you come forward, please identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we would ask you to entertain a motion to accept their report as presented.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next item is request you approve a telecommunication audit services contract for Troy and Banks. If you recall, we went out for bids for services to do our telecommunication audit. Troy and Banks was the most responsive bidder, and we approved them, awarding the bid to them at the last meeting, and this is to approve their contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Commissioners, at the last meeting, you'll recall, we had a proposal for Mr. Jim Busby for a parcel in the Mossy Head Industrial Park. The board, in its wisdom, determined that that particular use at the site he was interested in was not in the county's best interest. Subsequent to that, we met with Mr. Busby and talked more about what his needs were and how we could accommodate him. If you look there on your screen, you'll see a parcel, and it's kind of dim. But we visited the area at the eastern end of our industrial park property and to the southern boundary, which would probably be the least desirable property in the park, simply from the distance, two eighty-five. Mr. Busby understands that we're in the process of constructing the road that would provide service to that site. However, during the interim, he can gain access from the east around the Mossy Head Cemetery and across the railroad track. That property meets his needs. As it's situated, he can begin his construction during the time we're building the permanent road. So he was in agreement that, and it may not be that particular location, but it will be in that segment, just whatever works best to get them through the building process. So staff recommends that we approve selling Mr. Busby the one and a half acres that he requested earlier. But at this location, at the price of twenty thousand dollars per acre, to develop the same project that he presented to us at the last meeting, which is a food distribution complex.
Board's wishes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
I would ask Larry, I know that road out there, I get calls on it quite often. That is a dirt road.
Right.
Going past the cemetery, just make sure that we would, that the neighbors out there aren't impacted.
Right. And really, there, there won't be a lot of traffic. It'll just be whatever their materials delivery are during their construction process.
Oh, okay.
We would anticipate hopefully getting the road finished about the time they'd be ready to go in service. So there, there may be a few trucks in and out prior to that, but we're gonna try to coordinate that to get our road finished about the time they're ready to move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next item is regarding the City of Freeport Fire Department and their proposal to the county. Mr. Sunday has been heading that up, so I'll let him make that presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on August the twenty-sixth, at your board meeting, you were presented a proposal from the City of Freeport to provide fire protection services for the city. At the subsequent board meeting, September the ninth, you were provided with an informational brief regarding some items that would be considered as part of that acquisition. And today, in your packet, you have a staff recommended counterproposal for your consideration regarding that proposal.
How can we consider this at this point? I mean, we just set our budget last night.
Any...
If I understand it correctly, Mr. Sunday, what you're proposing is that any additional cost that would result from this would actually come from what we would, your counterproposal would come from the City of Freeport. So it would be revenue and expense neutral for this coming year within your counterproposal?
In the counterproposal, that is correct.
If we, if we were to accept theirs, there would be a shortfall in the county's budget of several hundred thousand?
In, in the initial proposal that was provided by Freeport, they offered to pay to the county the amount that would be collected from a fire assessment inside the city limits, which roughly equates to a hundred fifty-six thousand, six fifty-six. And yes, that would equate to about a three hundred fifty thousand dollar shortfall. Their budget for this coming year for the Freeport Fire Department is five hundred and eight thousand, five forty-five. In the counterproposal for the first year to acquire and operate it, we would recommend that we take that budget to, to get it up and get it off the ground for, for year one.
Stan, I ask you to look into a fire assessment ordinance that they had down there?
Yes.
And can you brief the board on what you found out? Basically, while we're waiting, they had...
I'm ready.
You got it? Go ahead.
There is a fire impact fee resolution. Per Freeport's resolution, these fees are placed in an escrow account to be used for new fire facilities and equipment. Their financial report reads as though there was two hundred eighty-three thousand and, two eighty-three, two thirty-eight in the city's restricted fund balance for these funds at year-end nine thirty thirteen. Collections for the fire impact fee for the past three years have been for FY twelve, fifteen thousand, three sixty-six. For FY thirteen, eight thousand and seventy-two. For FY fourteen, seventeen thousand, six hundred.
And there's not an offer to, for us to take that to help pay the shortfall?
Yeah, I think when we first looked at this, into this, we were unaware, I was unaware at least, that this was available. And whether or not, and I would think that Stan has not yet had the opportunity to talk with Freeport concerning this fund that apparently is earmarked strictly for fire, and whether or not they'd be willing to use those funds to help offset the cost of taking it over. Because we're be, three hundred fifty-one thousand short. Mainly because we had to set up last year a new firehouse out in Windswept because the agreement or disagreement, whatever you want to call it, with Freeport fell through. So we've got the, and you're right, Sarah, the budget has been set as of last night. And we would have to come up with about three hundred fifty thousand dollars to take it over.
And I do have one more concern, is that most of our firefighters are dual trained. And if, Stan, you correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but I think there's only one or two of their employees. So we would have to pay for them to be cross-trained.
That is correct. Freeport has eight employees in their fire department, six rank and file, a chief and a captain. Of those eight personnel, there is one that is dual certified in fire and EMS.
And that would cost us roughly twenty thousand dollars?
Sixteen thousand and change, I believe.
And cha, yeah, okay. So that, you, you gotta add that twenty thousand to that surplus as well, I mean...
Well, that's true.
So that's gotta be added in as well. You know, I certainly want to work with Freeport. We, we've always wanted to work with Freeport, but, you know, I have some concerns.
That's, that's one of the issues, is their certification, because as of two thousand and five, when our service became a dual service, fire and EMS, all of our personnel that come on board are required to be firefighter certified, as well as either EMT or paramedic certified. And so that, that would be a burden to the county in both money and placement of the individuals during the time that it would take them to obtain those certifications.
I have one other question. Whenever, in two thousand and five, when we've had firefighters and we had, you know, EMT, did we pay for their training, or did these individuals pay for their training themselves? Or was it a mix?
I think it's been a mix, but I'm not certain.
One question too. So this would really, you know, this agreement really helped them out, right? I mean, we already have a fire department out...
In Windswept?
East of, east of Freeport. So this would help them out with their finances. Is that kind of the idea?
Obviously, it would free up about three hundred fifty thousand dollars that they could use in their general fund.
However, yeah, it, yeah, it's, you know, then the taxpayers of Walton County bear that, you know, that, the brunt of that. So I think Stan should just continue to negotiate with them and see, you know, where we are with, with that shortfall. Otherwise, it really doesn't make sense for the county to, to do that, does it?
Well, I know we, we want to work with Freeport and any of the cities that's within the county, but we, I think we also gotta look at it on the financial side. And, you know, that's three hundred fifty thousand. I know just recently finding out about this two hundred eighty-three thousand that they have in their fire impact fund is whether or not they'd even entertain discussing using that money to help offset this stuff, at least for this first year.
So Stan would go back and, I'm sorry, you'd go back and talk to them about that, Stan?
Three hundred, the three hundred fifty thousand is just not a one-time deal. It's gonna be from now on.
And that is the decision.
It's gonna be reoccurring each year.
Reoccurring, yes.
So you, you gonna, you can't just say it's three hundred fifty thousand is a one-time deal.
Right.
So it's gonna be every year, we gonna have to pay that.
It's gonna increase incrementally due to the fact that businesses and homes are being built in there, but it's not gonna be a, a windfall for sure.
And also, once, and we know Freeport's going to grow, so what keeps them from coming back later on? And two years, three years, four years down the road, saying we want our fire department back, and we got it up and running. So how, because we're gonna be inside the municipality of Freeport.
One other, what is their assessment? It's not seventy-five dollars. What is it?
They don't have...
They don't have any assessment?
They don't have...
So, and, because that would have to be part of it. They're gonna have to do an assessment inside the city in order to, you know?
Well, and talking with Clayton, they're kinda looking at it in, in two ways. One, they would just take the fire assessment fees and apply it to the homes and businesses within the Freeport city limits and cut us a check out of their general revenue. Or we can go and put it on the tax rolls and get it there. Now, his take on just paying it to the county out of their funds is that in the event you have somebody that's delinquent in their taxes or fails to pay their taxes, you're still getting paid something instead of having to go through all that tax certification process. So...
Then further down the line, can they decide just not to do that anymore? Could they vote not to do that?
Sure. I'm sure they can, and I guess council would have to write it up or make it...
It takes action each year to renew those assessments.
But how would this be implemented? I mean, they would have to, wouldn't they have to have public hearings?
Yes, sir.
Care through the, they'd have to go through the process.
There's the process.
We don't know what the outcome of that'll be.
That's correct.
You know, it could be upside down, you know?
So the question is, do we ask Stan to continue talking with them, or do we just forget about it right now?
I think, I, I think it's prudent, because we do want to, to be good stewards to continue to work with them and see what we can come up with.
Are there any particular modifications to the counterproposal that you have before you that you want to make before we go back?
I think from a standpoint of negotiations, if the board would take action, that this is our position today with direction to continue to negotiate if these terms are not acceptable to the city. That way, we will have the, the backing of the board in those negotiations.
All right. Let me throw something out for the board to consider. In my conversation with Clayton, if you remember the last, if you look at the last bullet that's on this, from Stan, a year ago, when they came to us, they profited all of this plus a million dollars towards the two point, four million they owe us on the sewer system. That is completely off the table, according to Clayton. They won't even entertain that. And Bill, I don't know, you probably know more about that sewer thing than I do. But that, that's the impression I get from them. That in itself would be a deal buster.
Well, not only that, what was different, and last year, they asked us to take six positions instead of eight, and that's an additional cost. And at that time, when we were negotiating, it was intended to use those personnel to go out to the Windswept Station, which we've now had to, to fill on our own. So there's, there's a lot of different factors that go into it. But certainly, this is the first I've heard about the impact fund that they've got. And I'd like to, if we, if we ask Stan to go forward with this as a basis, I'd like to add that aspect to it as well, because this is, that's a game changer as well.
And, and I'm concerned, what if Freeport helped us pay half of getting the training for these people? I mean, you know, the county's taking all this on and paying for their training as well. Why don't Freeport help pay at least half of that cost?
Okay. That's certainly something we'll entertain.
Alan, you stretching or you wanting to talk?
Yeah, for the record, Alan Osborne, I'm not sure on what the direction is. I didn't hear anybody discuss, and I'd like to hear it discussed. If they're, if they can vote not to pay fire tax, how in the world can they ask us to pay for their fire coverage? Now, come on, everybody in the county is paying fire tax, aren't they, except, is this the only people who aren't paying fire tax? I don't know. Does anybody know?
Uh, the funiac, probably.
Yeah, the municipalities don't have to pay the fire tax. They, the ones that have their own...
Yeah, the municipalities don't have to pay the fire tax. They, they, the ones that have their own fire protection do it through their own ad valorem.
Yeah, they do.
Shouldn't the condition of getting a chunk of money from the county be that you guys have to pay your proportional for fair share of fire tax? And if you vote not to pay that, you're voting not to have adequate fire service.
That's what we just.
But I'm, but I'm, but I'm saying it's just not that clearly stated. I think a condition of you guys negotiating with them to get a chunk of money is it ought to be based on what they collect because it's a population issue. And it ought, and it ought to be a condition that if you guys vote not to collect fire tax, then we're going to have to vote. Or as a board, our position is, and you can talk about that or however you have to take a position. But our position is, we don't intend to give you any money if you don't intend to pay any in because that's just not fair. What if every, what if we formed three thirty-one South Walton City and said, we don't want to pay any fire tax? Well, that's where you get it all.
Now, that is, that is part of.
So that's a condition
Yes, sir.
That they have to vote to pay a proportional fair share before you guys will fund it?
They would have to implement the same fire assessment that the county does, which currently is seventy-five dollars a residential unit in.
And will you pay them more than seventy-five dollars per resident? For residents that, that you're collecting tax on?
We're not paying them anything.
I mean, will they get more of that money? Is it filters through? Is that the amount they'll get? Or you, or they need an additional three hundred sixty thousand besides that?
No. What it is, is right now, based upon our present fire assessment fees, they have went in there and identified every home and business in there. And they have used those figures to calculate that we have, their cost would be a hundred fifty-six thousand plus to pay for the fire assessment. Now, it, it's up to them and I guess it'll be part of the negotiation as to whether or not they go forward later on and implement the fire assessment like we do here. So we can.
I mean, I think it should be the position of the board that everybody in the county, unless they vote they don't want it, should have the same equal fire protection, no matter where you live or no matter how you pay. But you got to pay something to have it.
And that, that has been the board's position. For instance, since it passed.
So that's the position of the board while Stan negotiates?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, as part of that counterproposal, it does say for second and subsequent fiscal years that Freeport will establish fire assessment according to the guidelines and timelines equivalent to that of the counties.
Okay. All right. What's board's wishes?
What if we, what if we assume the responsibility? Are we going to wait till this assessment comes in or are we going to wait till go ahead with the process and get it in hopes that the fire assessment gets passed?
Freeport's proposal was they would pay us that amount even though they don't have the assessment in place out of their general revenue funds. However, our.
For one year, for one year or?
For the year, yes.
Stan said one year.
For the coming year, then they would implement the fire assessment and that would be collected on the tax rolls. However, our counterproposal encompasses all of their budgeted dollars for the coming fiscal year, which is five hundred and eight thousand dollars, I believe. And they can collect that, get that from anywhere they choose to get it from.
In other words, it's going to pass regardless or fail?
Not necessarily.
Well, if it fails, what happens if we go out to, if we assume responsibility to the fire department and it doesn't pass, what happens then?
Then they will have to figure out where they're going to generate that equivalent revenue from.
Stan, you.
But Stan's going to continue and negotiate, so this will take a while.
I, I've got a question real quick. And I know that last year, again, on the table last year was the paying of a million dollars towards the two point four million dollar sewer loan. But now you're telling me that that's off the table and would be a deal breaker. Is, is there a reason why it's no longer available?
All right. In my conversations with Mr. Atkinson, and it was my understanding that he and the mayor of the city of Freeport were to be here this morning. I don't know if they're in the audience.
So you.
But he didn't give an explanation. He just did not think the city would entertain the two issues being packaged together.
There, there's a number of differences between the, what we thought we had an agreement on last year and what was on the table from both sides versus what's been taken away from the package this year.
That is correct.
Do we need to continue? I'd like to see that, that back in the negotiation package too. It was on the table last year. I don't know that the money has disappeared. I don't know why they can't start paying back down that loan even though, even though technically it's supposed to come from the, the hookup fees for the water and sewer. It's previously been made by even the prior mayor, an opportunity to, to pay that money to the county. I'd like to see that at least brought back in the negotiation aspect of it. I'd like to see that debt get off the books.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, do we need a motion or anything? Ask him to continue on or just direction?
Direction, okay.
Good work, Bulldog.
Mr. Jones.
Chairman, next item is regarding asking the board to consider moving the November eleventh regular BCC meeting due to the Veterans Day holiday. The board meeting is scheduled to fall on November the eleventh, which is Veterans Day. If we're going to move it, we would suggest to Thursday, the thirteenth perhaps.
That's kind of an unlucky number.
November thirteenth.
The eleventh is Veterans Day and we're taking the holiday on Tuesday?
That's, that is the eleventh.
Well, we're actually taking. We're actually taking the holiday because it's Bill Infil's birthday on Monday, on the tenth. Have to recognize that. What's wrong with the twelfth? Or is that too soon after the holiday?
Either way, it's fine.
What about Wednesday, the twelfth?
I'm good.
What time is that going to be?
South, this is South meeting.
Well, I got on my calendar for that date, retirement for Judge Laporte.
That's on the thirteenth, right?
That's thirteenth on the Thursday.
And that's it? You don't do the twelfth?
The twelfth.
And Commissioners, the planning commission meets on the thirteenth at five PM.
Twelfth's looking better.
Yeah, twelfth looks good.
I just remembered after Wayne told me.
It's a Wednesday.
Four o'clock?
Yep. So moved?
I got a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Next item is simply for your review. This, this time we begin looking at our state and federal appropriation requests and priorities. We provided you with last year's information. We're certainly not looking for any action today, but just make sure you had this and know that we're, we will be moving forward in short order on establishing those priorities. So absent any questions, we'll just leave that with you for you to review and we'll be in touch to get your comments and feedback to establish the priorities for the coming year. Next item, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners regarding the sports park property in South Walton. Through a series of public workshops and vetting process of the available properties, the parcel that's come to be known as the MC Davis property was selected as the most appropriate location for the South Walton Sports Facility Complex. If you recall, following our property acquisition ordinance, we obtained two appraisals for that property. One at nine hundred and twenty thousand and one at one million three hundred and ninety thousand. After those appraisals were in, we had discussions with Mr. Davis, who felt those appraisals were considerably low. He commissioned and had a, an additional appraisal that established the value of that property at three point five million dollars. After that, we had extensive negotiation with Mr. Davis. Through those negotiations, it was determined that the lowest acceptable price he would take for the property is two point four million dollars. With the contingency that we had discussed through all that, the county would participate up to four hundred thousand dollars in the construction of the roadway and the improvements needed to access this property. Mr. Davis believes that the turn lanes and the roadway will run in the one point two million dollar range. The school board, as you're aware, has purchased property that we use that road as well and Mr. Davis will retain property that we use it. So his proposal is that we split the cost of that one-third between the county to access our sports property, the school property, and then Mr. Davis will pay the additional third. So our proposal and recommendation is that we move forward with the purchase of this property at two point four million dollars. With the contingency that we will participate up to four hundred thousand dollars for this construction of the entrance road and the associated improvements, turn lanes and such. But not to exceed one-third of the total cost or four hundred thousand, whichever of those is lower. The school board, as you know, bought property adjacent to this property. The price that at two point four million will be paying about thirty thousand dollars an acre less than what the school board paid. Now granted, their property did front Highway ninety-eight, but for a school or a sports park, there's not a lot of value in having that frontage. If you choose to move forward, the statute requires that if we purchase property outside of the boundaries of the two appraisals, that it has to have an extraordinary majority, which in this case would be a four-fifth vote. So we'll need four affirmative votes in order to make the purchase. So that's our recommendation. We'll entertain any questions you may have. I believe Mr. Davis is here if you had any questions to him, but otherwise.
Okay, just my comments. We took the ten million dollars that we had saved or paid down on a thirty million dollar loan. And we made the decision to buy the sports park property and build one there. Now, ten million dollars is all we got. It's two point four million for the property, four hundred thousand for the road contribution. That's two point eight. We have three hundred thousand that was to be paid back to that, to the general fund because of Helen McCall Park. And then we've got about one point two million, give or take, over at the west side at that sprayfield area. So that's four point three million and we haven't really built anything yet. So I'm just wanting everybody to know that when, end of the day, if it all washes out like this, there's only going to be a little over five million dollars to be put into the sports park out there. And that five million dollars on thirty acres or whatever it is, is not going to go very far. Ms. Meadows?
Yeah, I think five million dollars, I think, built the Freeport Park that, didn't it? I mean, I know that was years ago, but I think it's a start. I mean, I think we got to start somewhere and you know, maybe some funds will become available, but I think we could stretch five million. We're good at stretching a dollar. We could stretch five million, I think, and at least get something going. Is that going to be an elementary school?
Ye- yes, ma'am.
Do you know? Okay, okay. Just, just curious. Anyway, that's, that, that would be my comments on it. It's, you know, it kind of is what it is and we've, we've got to do something, I think.
Commissioner, I, I wasn't saying I wasn't in favor of it.
Oh, I know.
Five million dollars, there may be some expectations out there of the people. It's going to be they're, they're expecting this, this and that.
Yeah.
And you can't do it for all.
Right, right.
Maybe it can be added on at a future date.
Right. It's always subject to, I tell everybody, it's always subject to funding what we can get.
And this may be an opportunity for some of the parents to come together down there and help raise some funds. You know, I mean, I know that was what was done up here years ago is that the parents actually, you know, helped with the, the ball fields that the kids play on up here. So, you know, with five million, what can you help us do, you know? And you're right, it doesn't all have to be done at once, but we, we need to start. And I, we're not going to find any more suitable piece of property in South Walton. I mean, we have certainly looked and it's not there. And I think being next to the elementary school helps the school board out, you know?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if this does pass, I'd like to see us then at least prioritize the five million to the extent that which ones are we going to do first and then a phasing process so that we can continue to look to the future to try and enhance it, but at least get what we believe are the most significant items in there first to the tune of the five million dollars when, when it comes to vote.
I agree. Yeah, totally, definitely.
Ma'am, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, while she's coming up, we'll just brief you on the South Walton Utility Property. We have a, a proposed lease agreement with them. There's some things there that we're working through, but we're fairly close to finalizing that deal and be able to move forward with preparing that for our practice and open space facilities as well.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Emily Weekly. I'm a resident of Santa Rosa Beach and three children that play sports at Helen McCall Park. I'm here representing, I actually have several hundred signatures petitions regarding that we would like for the sports park, of course, to be funded, for the land to be purchased and the facilities to be planned. And also I have email letters from the several different representatives of the recreational leagues, the baseball, the football, as well as Dynamo Soccer, which is not a rec, but it is a paid-for league, that is requesting that they also have input in the design. So maybe that we best can take our five million dollars and say, this is what we really need. For those of us that are out there on a daily basis, you know, contact us, ask for our input, ask for what is missing, what we're looking for, what issues we have right now with Helen McCall Park before just randomly designing a plan that may or may not fit all of our needs.
Well, I, I would expect is, if this proceeds, that there will be discussions with our rec people and a developer, because we're not large enough to do it ourselves. So we'll have to find somebody to do that.
And also, and why I'm up here so I don't have to get up here again, is the parents of South Walton have, I'm kind of the representative today and I missed the public speaking in the beginning because I dropped my kids off at school and just could not physically make it here, except for a few minutes after nine. But we're asking to table the discussion regarding the tennis bids until the meeting is held in South Walton, where other parents can come and voice their opinion. We're right now, for this mere fact of Helen McCall and its overcrowdedness and that we have such limited space there right now, we would like that not to be even approached until we have extra additional space and the land is purchased for the sports park and the plan is already in place. And I also have copies of everything.
If you'll hand them to the clerk.
Thank you.
Alan?
For the record, Alan Osborne, I think I eased your mind a little bit on your budget issue, if you just listened to me for a minute. You've heard me preach over and over quasi-judicial about the flum and what its impacts are. And this is an impact of the flum. When we've changed all the land uses from conservation two to one residential, not only have we thrown off the road use, we threw off the amount of schools we needed and that's why the school board had to panic. We've thrown off the amount of people that we think we can get to our beach accesses. And then in the end, we've generated a lot of children in South Walton that we never had, more than the school board's ever seen. And I believe it's still continuing in the south end to grow at ninety percent greater than the north end in number of kids. So I'd like you to think about this as you approach that budget. You're never going to get a chance to buy another big chunk of land that you buy now. What we build on it, there are going to be lots of talk about it, but we got to have it to build on. And, you know, my position would be buy more land besides this. Because you, what you have to look at is what's already been platted in the south end of the county that's not built on. And it's thousands of places. So you're going to have additional income revenue to cover the cost as we build. It's not like you're not, your fund's not going to increase. It will. So I don't want that to scare you off because that money is going to be no good to us in ten years if there's no land left to buy. It also makes it the argument that you're going to have to look at impact fees that developments might have to pay into a fund to rip down old places on the beach and build public access. But it doesn't change the fact that all these factors are affecting kids. So if they can't go to the beach and there's not much to do after school and there's no place to do it, what in the world are they going to do? They're going to get in trouble. And it'll be us, the adults, it's our fault if the kids get in trouble. So I urge you to buy this. I also urge you to transfer some of your budget funds from rec funds based on the number of kids into District Five. And I want to offer a temporary solution. What you've got to understand, and I, I coached for three years and I spent ten years on Helen McCall. We used to have to take a shovel before the games on Saturday and dig a trench to get the water off of it. The park has immensely improved over the years in many different ways, but it doesn't change the fact that it's still overloaded. And maybe a cheaper solution I'd like to propose to you, and it may be Stan or one of those guys could work on it with y'all's direction and work with Ms. Meadows in that district is, when you go down thirty A, and Corey Godwin here is, I believe is here, the Boys and Girls Club still owns a couple of chunks of land. They probably want to hang on that to investment until they can get up enough money to build a club. But it seemed like we could lease that really cheap. And if you look at it, there's not too much to do out there because what we need to. too much to do out there, because what we need, too, is a few more multipurpose fields. But even if that can be negotiated, I don't know if Ms. Meadows has enough money in her recreation fund. And with the number of kids that you're dealing with, we've got to have, they've got to have somewhere to practice soccer, they got to have somewhere to practice football, they just got to. It's a bill you have to pay, and the government, we call these must-pays. We must pay this for the kids. So even if you don't have enough money, and that would be a concern for me, too, Mr. Chapman, but I'd like you to consider the amount of money that's already been approved when they platted those neighborhoods. And when those neighborhoods get built, the day they close, Johnny and Sally want to join the sports team and go play with their friends. So you can't wait until all those platted places are built. You must do it now. I've been to a lot of meetings, people are working. I saw Mr. Romano, lots of other people, I've read lots of emails. I want you to imagine there's about, probably about five hundred total parents that are staring at you going, please, fix this problem that we formed in South Walton, and the biggest problem is land. Buy all you can. Thank you.
All right. What's the board's wishes? Most to approve?
Second.
Third.
We've got a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote, because we need a four-fifth majority on this. Start with Mr. Pridgen.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As a follow-up motion, I'd like us then to go forward with securing the amended bank loan agreement that we've got, so that the money can become available to start this process ASAP. And that's going to require, I don't know if it requires a public hearing or not, do you know, Wanda? We need to get the board's approval to go ahead and close the deal to get the money made available to do this.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, next item is from Public Works regarding requests to be approved, the Task Work Order for Purple Ridge for the Professional Engineering Services at the Northwest Florida Commerce Park, or the Mossy Head Industrial Park as we know it these days, the amount of three hundred seventy-one dollars, thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. This is for engineering design and permitting services that are required to complete the infrastructure improvements and the bid process and the inspection services through that process. So staff recommends your approval that we move this process forward.
Motion to approve.
And I would, Mr. Chairman, this is coming from the state appropriation and not from county tax.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Next item is a request to approve advertised for bids to the purchase and installation of commercial-grade chain-link fence to be installed at the west side of Helen McCall Park, using the Helen McCall Park Phase One account. I believe this is designed to fence off the mosquito control ditch, which has become problematic.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be a chain-link fence that would go along the south boundary line, south of the Mission Play Park, all along the mosquito ditch, because we don't want people to fall in it. And also, it's going to go north and fence off that retention area to the west that can sometimes be an issue, so that the soccer balls and the other tennis ball, not tennis balls, but baseballs and footballs don't go in the mosquito ditch, because I understand some people have been in there trying to fish balls out. So we want to get that done.
I just got a question.
Yes.
Is that mosquito control ditch on the county property, or is that off county property?
I think it's on state land, but I'm not absolutely positive.
Just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it.
It's a mosquito control ditch.
It is.
Why is it mosquito control fencing this?
Oh, oh.
Or if that's what they're looking at.
Well, you know, they don't fence off their ditches.
They don't fence off nothing.
No, no. I mean, you know, they don't fence off their ditches. So you'll have to ask mosquito control that question. But we don't want anybody else, we don't want anybody else down there fishing out soccer balls.
Our children. We need to fence it off. Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
For the fence sake, I'll say we have several coyotes, and once it turns dusk, that start running across the kids' practice fields, why the kids are out there.
Really?
That also helps with, the fencing helps stop that, because I don't know why the coyotes run, they don't care that the kids are out there playing soccer or football. They will run straight across the fields, where we have to stop everything, get the kids where we know where they are. So that's, it's also a safety issue besides the mosquito control ditch.
Are they going to the garbage?
Don't take what I said wrong. I mean, I understand. I just wondered why mosquito control.
No, but I mean, there's other, it's not just the ditch that it is also an issue, but it's also that we have wildlife running across our practice fields as soon as dusk happens.
Are they running from one point to the, are they running north into the woods?
Yes. They're running.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Need to check the endangered species.
And there's also been, I mean, the bears aren't out there typically when we're there, but there's also several bears out there.
Yeah, it's surrounded by state forest land. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is in regards to the tennis courts at Helen McCall Park. It's been brought to the board through a request earlier to move this process forward. We've identified the funding. Public Works is ready to move forward to advertise for bids to build the two adult and two youth tennis courts to include defense and lighting associated with those courts at Helen McCall Park.
One of the, yeah, one of the comments I'd like to make is, you know, we need to, one of the things is, because the bid process and all that takes so long, we need to go ahead and get it in the hopper. And I've gotten a lot of emails and such from the people out there. I've talked to Brad, we're going to go out there and look at the fields once again and see what would be left. Evidently, there's about a half acre that would remain after the tennis courts are put in. There is also another tiny little piece that we could build the tennis courts on. They would be pointed in the wrong direction, but they would be tennis courts.
Correct direction for tennis courts?
Yeah. Tennis courts need to be north-south because of the east-west sun and that kind of thing. So if you notice, all tennis courts. So, and we've been kind of working with the tennis people and their kids. These under-ten courts are for the kids under age ten, and evidently it's something new that the Tennis Association has come up with that trains kids and things like that on tennis. But anyway, what I would like to see is that we move ahead with the bids, but we continue to look at the location of the tennis courts and try not to encroach on the, any of the fields that are out there currently. So, and I think by the time we get the bids in and look at them and decide where we're going to put them, you know, it will probably be January of two thousand fifteen, you know, before we would be able to go forward. That's kind of my assessment of the matter.
And I tend to agree with you. I mean, it does take a while, and we do have to remember that tennis is a sport, too. And they are adults and children that play tennis that need a place to play as well as the soccer and the others. So you're right, it's going to take six months or more just to get the bid out and to see where you want to put it. So if that's a motion, I will second your motion.
I've got a question, Commissioner Meadows. Are you going to bring, after y'all have done your research, going to bring the locations or locations back to the board for approval, or is this?
We could. I mean, we could certainly bring it back to you and show you what we've come up with and then see what you think. Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I interrupted your motion.
No, she made the motion, I made the second.
Could y'all put that other picture up of the west side of the park for us? Louis, or whoever's, whoever's, whoever the Wizard of Oz is back there pulling all the strings? Yeah, okay.
There.
Yeah, originally, we had the tennis courts located in that, where that little hand is now, in there. We squeezed them in right there. We really could only get, I think, one and one under ten in there, but they, of course, would go the wrong direction. So, you know, the tennis people, though, said, well, you know, it's better than nothing. And then we looked at, we've got some fields on the east side that we could squeeze parking, tennis, and leave, still leave a practice field on. So that's what we're, that's where we are right now. But we're going to go out there and look at the land and see, you know, what can be done to accommodate everybody. We do have the Boys and Girls Club offering us their soccer field, so we have those. We're going to have the new fields down in Miramar for practice. We've got fields over at Driftwood Park that can be practiced on. And I understand that everybody likes to be in the same place, because they've got three kids and they're all doing something different. So we've got to look at all of those factors, and we'll come back to y'all with some more information, locations, if that's okay.
That works.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. All right. Jim Bagby's not here. Jennifer, you doing it?
I am.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Vigil, on behalf of Mr. Bagby, he's at the Governor's Conference today. The first item that we have from the TDC is to request approval of use for unspent FY14 capital and equipment funds to secure a payroll automation system. We did already purchase everything out of our capital improvement budget that we intended to, and we have a little bit of reserve left over. And the automation of payroll is an initiative that was placed on me when I came on board.
My question is, have you gotten with Human Resources, have you gotten with the Clerk's Office to see that this will work with their systems?
We've been in contact with, we all use Navoline, which is the countywide software. We've been in contact with Jed Sconyers to make sure that the selected vendor has worked with Navoline seamlessly in the past. We did get three quotes. One company was disqualified because they were not successful in working with Navoline. The difference between the two quotes, actually, is Executime, which was not chosen, was a preferred partner of Navoline. That's just a business agreement they have between the two of them. The preferred partner situation allows for them, Sun Guard, to charge us a discounted rate, but with the additional fees that Executime charged over the course of the year for maintenance and software, it was going to be more expensive in the long run. So we actually went with an option called Time Clock Plus that has worked with Sun Guard, or Sun Guard Navoline previously.
What is the reason you're doing this? What is the reason?
I think that they wanted a paperless system for leave approval.
They isn't.
Jim, Jim wanted us to go to a paperless approval system. It also gives the employees a clock-in, clock-out system, so that we are better able to audit and track their hours. Right now, we don't have any system of clocking in and clocking out, and this is a biometric, so there's no time cards or PIN numbers or anything for anyone to keep track of. We'll know it's them when they go and put their thumbprint on it.
I would like to hear from the Clerk's Office and from Human Resources before we do anything on this, and I haven't heard from either one of them.
Mr. Clerk? You have comments?
Any technology that we can use that will help automate the process of getting that data from the employee into our accounting system, then we're all for. It's a, it is, it is a plus. And it presents us with a paperless timesheet.
Okay. And I know that HR keeps up with, like, sick leave and all that. How are you going to provide them with that information?
We've actually contacted everyone, and we've agreed to use the exact same structure. There's actually a list that Mr. Sconyers from the Clerk's Office provided, that the vendor has to agree to use the exact same time codes, the exact same accrual hours and everything, so that it does exactly what the system is currently.
Okay, so the system would go to the Clerk's Office and to Human Resources?
Yes.
The same information would go to both departments, so that would be?
We would export reports, yes, and send to both. Right now, what we do is it's all paper, and I scan in a stack of sheets, and sometimes the file is too big for me to email. So this would be just, we would still have the same list, the same final report, it would just be an automation of the hours of accrual. And then the employees, actually, it gives a benefit to the employees, because whenever they clock in, they can actually look at, how many hours do I have left? Right now, we deal with a lot of inquiries. I don't know how much sick leave I have, I don't know how much annual leave I have, do I have comp time? And right now, it's all on the screen for them.
How many of these will you have?
Of the biometric machines? We only require one biometric machine, because the majority of our hourly employees at the TDC are at the beach operations facility. We only have a very handful of those that are at the TDC Visitor Center, so those would be logged in via a regular computer terminal.
Well, I guess it's just amazing to me that Public Works has successfully done this through the years.
I think we're like the beta system. I think we're the beta system for new technology, so I think everyone's kind of looking forward to it.
Yeah, we've got to use technology to our max ability, so I think this is, this is one step in that direction.
Starting small with the TDC, we're able to just purchase one of the biometric machines. So if it ends up being something that is viable, then I think that more county departments would probably want to come and look at it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
And a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Next.
The second thing on the agenda, the next thing from the TDC, is the request to withdraw the Dothan Beach Access Boardwalk Improvements Project from the Deepwater Horizon Oil Spill Nerdah Phase Three project list. The reason for this is that Nerdah prefers to pay for things before construction begins. It has to be approved, and right now, the Dothan Beach Access has been deemed unsafe, and we just need to move forward with correcting those issues. So since we're going to start construction, it needs to be taken off the list officially.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
The last thing I was supposed to give, TDC updates. I don't really have too many. Mr. Bagby, like I said, is at the Governor's Conference, so if y'all don't have any questions?
I have one. Go ahead.
Six weeks ago, we asked TDC to start looking at land purchases for more regional accesses and off-site parking with Shuttle. At the next board meeting, can he come back, or you come back with an update as to where we stand on that project?
I will. I do believe he's been looking into different options with some of these state parks, and then different land options for land acquisition.
Thank you.
So make sure he knows to do that.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item I have is a request to review and submit comments on a proposed ordinance for the Inlet Beach Water System franchise ordinance. I've already received a couple of comments from some Commissioners, but this is just the submission to you to receive comments, to adopt or to change the ordinance in our adoption process. And that's all I have on it.
Did, I know you met with their attorney and all that kind of thing. Okay. So is this, is this agreement, are they in agreement with this proposal?
Yes, ma'am. And they also understand that there may be comments, there may be changes. They understand between now and the actual adoption, there could be changes. They're not, they haven't died with this document.
Okay, okay. So when are you going to bring this back?
The way I understand the procedure is I'll bring it back to you the next meeting for adoption, then transmit it to the last meeting.
Okay.
And I do have to have, we have to have a public hearing in between. Right.
Or is it transmitted?
All in Secretary of State.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right, so we're going to have, next meeting, we'll have a special meeting to discuss this?
No, just a public hearing during the meeting to discuss it. Yes. Thank you. Next item, excuse me, go ahead.
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to have a public hearing?
We gotta do that at the next meeting.
No, we'd need to do that today.
Oh, we do?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is, as you recall, we had on the last agenda a request to accept a donation of some property from Wells Fargo in Commissioner Chapman's district. I have on the agenda today a request for you to approve a resolution accepting the donation, finding that the property has a public purpose, and waiving the appraisal requirement essentially in the ordinance since it is a donated piece of property. There's no reason to have an appraisal, it's gonna be given to us, so.
What's the public purpose?
As Mr. Chapman stated, I believe, he's going to hopefully be able to use it for an EMS station and some other, fire station and some other uses.
That's, that's correct.
Community garden.
Community garden.
Grow crops.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um. Community garden.
I'm gonna recuse myself because I have some mortgages with, with them and.
Who in this room doesn't? I've got one with them too. Yeah.
Are you gonna benefit from this?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's just.
Never mind. I just don't wanna pay y'all on record.
Just one brief update. We did receive back yesterday, in fact, the deed on the Sea, Sea Grove property. We now are proud owners of Beachfront and Sea Grove.
All right.
Right. Without in mind, I've asked Jim Bagby to maybe get a little plaque or some kind of a notation on there that, you know, thank you, you know, Cube and Linda McGee for this, you know, beach. So he's, I think he's gonna work on that.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Meadows?
Yes. Traffic calming. We, we have, we get a lot of requests in the office, and I think Public Works does too, and maybe y'all do too. People want speed bumps or traffic tables or whatever, traffic calming techniques on public streets. I mean, we've even had some installed on 38 back when I was off the commission. So I've asked Public Works, you know, what our policy is, because people call and they say, well, and I say, well, it's our policy not to, not to do this, but we don't really have anything in writing and we don't have, really have anything. So my suggestion is that, to ask Public Works that they could come back to us with a, a written policy, so that when people call and that we look at these things, you know, we have something to tell them, like, you know, and this, and they say, well, why, why, why? What's the reason? Why can't you put speed bumps in here? Because people are speeding. So my request would be to ask Public Works to bring back a traffic calming policy mainly with regard to speed bumps on public streets. And Wilmer, Wilmer, come back when you've got on orange and blue with that, if you would. Thanks.
That may be a while, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Commissioner Meadows on it, but I'd like to expand it a little bit. Lately, we've, in my district, which has a lot of dirt roads and the traffic calming issue, we've been getting lots of complaints about four-wheelers out there speeding and tearing up the dirt roads. And I think years ago, there was some kind of action by the board with regard to that. But Public Works is spending a lot of time grading, maintaining, and then having to go back and redo it again because the roads are getting torn up. And I don't know if that's a law enforcement issue or we can do something from Public Works' standpoint.
Well, I have the same problem in my district, tearing it up. I was instrumental years ago, when I was with the Sheriff's Office, to get the county ordinance passed prohibiting four-wheelers on these county roads. I would ask the Sheriff's Representative, who I think is still here, maybe, yeah, well, Harold's here anyway. Where'd the major go? Had to step out, ask them to pick up the enforcement. I have asked them in my district, and it has calmed down. They, you may just make a special request to them, they'll, they'll wolf pack it out there for a while and try and get their attention.
Okay, thank you.
I know speed bumps are a problem. People want them put in. They think that they're gonna solve the problem in their neighborhood, but they actually don't because they tear up, and then, then county's liable for cars that are torn up. So I agree with you.
They make, you know, they make, they make noise too. I mean, sometimes you can put rumble strips down and, you know, it solves one problem, but then you get into the other problem. I don't wanna hear that, so.
Well.
That's all I have.
Okay, so your direction to Public Works is to come back with some policy for consideration? Okay.
Proposal, proposed policy.
Alrighty. Is that all you have, Ms. Meadows?
Yes, that's it.
All right. Ms. Commander?
Not a thing.
Mr. Enfield?
Write it down.
Ms. Chairman, just a reminder that our next board meeting, the first one in October, is here in the north end instead of the south end.
Correct. Mr. Pridgen? And I got the TDC park maintenance. I think there's, there's some parks being maintained by TDC on the bayside, and there was some action taken by the board years ago directing TDC to do so, absent a legislative finding. And I'm proffering to the board that maybe we ought to go ahead and make that finding so we can clean up the language and what have you on there.
You need a motion for that, sir?
Yes, I do.
I'll so move.
What, 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 what is the motion? To, to get the AG's opinion or to?
You just go ahead and make a legislative finding.
I, I.
I think that that's, you know, everything else that we've done, we've gotten an AG opinion on. I, I think that, and the county attorney's shaking his head, I think we need an AG's opinion on this, you know, just to be in the, just to do everything the same way that we do it. We've got an AG's opinion on the trolley, we've got an AG's opinion on a couple of other things, I think, during, maintain, maintenance of the bike pass, et cetera. So I, you know, I just feel very strongly that, that, you know, we can't just legislatively find this. We, we've got to have an AG's opinion to back it up.
But that's what we got an AG's opinion on, wasn't it? That we could make a legislative finding on things?
Well, I, I look at it as TDC markets anything south of the intercoastal. Now, we may not have an abundance of tourists like we do on the beach utilized in those base parks, so, but they're, they're there, they're used by the tourists. So I'm just saying that due to that fact, that we just, we make that finding and move forward.
I made a motion.
I wouldn't cut a second or nothing.
Do you think we need an AG counsel?
Well, let me put it this way. It makes, it makes me feel better every time we have one in our hands, and I know it makes Mr. Alford feel better when he has one in his hands. The, the law is pretty clear that you would have to have a legislative finding. That legislative finding has to say or has to be based on some evidence, empirical evidence, that the expenditure of funds is directly related to tourism and the, and the promotion of tourism, and that there has to be some tie-in between the promotion of the tourism through advertising. If, if you ask me to seek a AG opinion, the, the, the opinion to be sought is, is it possible for us to pay for park maintenance under those circumstances? That would be the AG, the request for the, for the AG opinion, the Attorney General opinion. So I mean, I, again, it, it always makes us feel better because that statute, and I don't mean to criticize legislators, but that statute is so poorly written and so very difficult to apply on an individual case-by-case basis. Alex's auditors get nervous and we all get nervous every, every time something is spent that's not, that's not actually advertising. So to answer your question, we don't have to have one, but it sure does make us much, much more comfortable.
All right.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion, but in this, counter motion, that we go out for an AG opinion.
Sure. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, are there any additional public comments at this time? Seeing none?
Ten minutes.
Is it?
Ten minutes.
Is there any questions from staff?
Clear on your face.
All right, we're gonna take about 15 minutes.
Need break.
Break, so we'll be back at 10:30.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. We have several items on the agenda. The first one is a request to receive comments from the board on an outdoor event ordinance. We have a group that's been working, trying to make some proposals to the ordinance to make it more effective, make it better. And we are asking for the board to look over the draft, provide some comments, and then allow us to schedule a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll ask Kerry Thiemann to come up and, and introduce the working group that we've been working with and to kinda go over the basics of the proposed changes.
Because I have a couple of questions at the, when she gets done.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kerry Thiemann. I'm with Walton County Planning. The Outdoor Review Committee consists of Mary Cooper of Administration, Sammy Sanchez and Ryan Crawford with South Walton Fire District, Deputy Harold Chover. They are all present here to answer questions regarding fire, life, and safety, and myself. We have been discussing the current outdoor event ordinance and the process to review the growing number of outdoor events in Walton County. You have before you a draft of changes we would like to make to the ordinance. To summarize, our intent is to clarify the definition of an outdoor event to minimize uncertainty, require additional safety information in our submittals, streamline the submittal and review process, add a citation and a fine to unpermitted events, and to require a permit but no fee for nonprofit organizations. And this is due to the increasing number of unpermitted large events that have critical traffic, fire, life, and safety concerns. We would entertain any comments from you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I'll, I'll lead out. On page two of your proposed, you have under exemptions for permitting requirements, and it says county-sponsored or approved outdoor events held on county property is being exempt from permitting. However, they are required to pay a permitting fee, because in, down there under Section C, it says county-sponsored approved outdoor events held on county property were struck through. So I take that as the county's gotta pay a fee?
They're, the county, county-sponsored events are exempt.
They're exempt from the permitting process if they're held on county property.
I understand that.
The first two are exempt from permitting. That is county-sponsored events on county property and activities sponsored or approved by the school board that are conducted on school board property. For an example, graduations and football games.
Okay.
So they're exempt from permitting. But if the school board, and I discussed this with Mr. Davis, if the school board, they occasionally have events off school board property, in that case, they would have to obtain a permit. They would be exempt from the fee, the school board, but they would have to obtain a permit for events that they hold off of school board property.
We require now that they must submit their application within 45 days of the scheduled events. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we've had some in the past that already advertised their event prior to approval of the event.
Correct.
And what measures is this committee recommending to make that not happen anymore or get them closer, get the compliance?
They can submit their event farther out if they wish to get it approved so that they can advertise, you know, on the website and what have you. But it's a minimum of 45 days because we need the time to process all the different departments, fire, Sheriff's Department, Administration, and Planning.
Well, it still runs into, and you know who I'm talking about. We won't mention any names, but you know who I'm talking about. And he makes it a point, apparently, in the past, to advertise he's gonna have it here, here, and here, and he hadn't even bothered to get it back up for approval.
Yes, sir.
And then we hear, well, I've already spent money for this, this, and that. Well, he's got his cart ahead of his horse, and it's almost like he's trying to use that as a means to make us go ahead and approve that project.
Yes, sir.
Prior to it being fully vetted by all the EM services that are out there.
Yes, sir. Even though the ordinance has always read that they are not to advertise or sell tickets until they have obtained their Walton County permit.
What is the mechanism to get them into compliance? Deny their application because of that?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir. And I don't, I'm, I'm gonna step in here a little bit, because one of the things they had originally drafted was some sort of grace period, but I think it was 15 to 45 days or something like that, that, you know, before the event, that if you don't have your permit, that we'll, we'll try to work with you between that period of time. And the problem that creates is not so much for these folks at Planning, because they can get the work done relatively quickly, but the folks in the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department have to basically go in and reschedule to cover the event, and it, it, it causes overtime problems, it causes scheduling problems. So the, the way we understand and the way we've tried to draft this is, you don't get in there on time. It's good, my grandmother used to say, good old tough nuggies, because that, that, coming in 10 days before an event or five days before an event and getting that permit just plays havoc with their schedules, and it's just not fair to those, those, those two groups of folks.
I think it should read that you do no advertising before you obtain the permits.
Well, I don't know that we can legally do that, because I think you've run into the first.
Well, then we can legally keep them from getting the permit.
That, that we do not have to give them the permit.
And, and to your question, Chairman.
Suggestion.
If they, if they aren't permitted and they don't, don't get permitted and they hold the event anyway, then that would be a code enforcement action we could take against the organizer of the event, if they hold it without being permitted.
But what is the fine for that? I mean, if a guy made $10,000 or $15,000 off of entry fees and you fine him $500, that's just the price of doing business.
That's, that's about the max we could, we could fine him for. That, that is an issue probably. We, quite frankly, I'm not sure. We have that case a lot of times where you have these fines and the, the money they'll make is far exceeded any fine amount if it comes to the cost of doing business. That is an issue.
Now, the, they can be, if they are holding an event without a permit, they can go, they can be issued a citation and a fine, and they can be shut down.
Could you shut them down at that time?
Because they're operating an event without a Walton County permit.
So who can shut them down at that time from day to day?
It is during business hours, code enforcement can go. If it is after hours, the Sheriff's Department can shut them down because they are operating an event without a permit.
And obviously, if you have impacts to the traffic network, that would probably be something else the Sheriff's Department wanna, wanna be evaluating as far as its impact on the traveling public.
Bill?
I've got a comment about the exemption. It says county-sponsored or approved outdoor events held on county property. From time to time, we hold the heavy equipment auctions up at the fairgrounds, and it's not county property. I think the word "on county property" should just be stricken out of there. County-sponsored or approved outdoor events.
Okay.
Very good suggestion.
Yeah. I agree.
Or county-approved outdoor, county, county-sponsored.
Approved outdoor events.
And, and approved, okay.
I think it's just, it's just county-sponsored events.
Yeah, yeah. That's easier. One of my, one of my things about what you're talking about, Bill, I think what we could do is, most of the, most of the people come to my office and sit down with me and show me everything. So I, I think what we need to do is, if we, whatever we adopt, I think that we need to send a, a notice to all the people that have had events here in the last year that have gotten permits. Most of them are road races and things like that, that, you know, we've given you grace period before. Next year, these are the rules, and if you don't do them, you're not having your event.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think we can, I think we know who they, you know, we know who they are, we know all the events that are, that are vying for 38 or wherever.
And we did, before we started this process, looking at this, our committee held a, an informational meeting. We got all of the event planners that we could get ahold of, all the ones that we had on file, and then others by word of mouth.
Okay.
Got it forwarded, and we had a boardroom full in the South Walton Annex, and we informed them of what was going on and what we were looking at doing. looking at doing. And we got quite a bit of positive support, and every event planner that's come to our review committee, this is our new process, they submit forty-five days before, we schedule them for the next month, the first Monday of every month, I schedule appointments. It's not a meeting, it's appointments, so they don't have to sit all day and wait. They come to their appointment, the whole committee is there, we review it, we ask the questions that we need to ask, and then they're set to go. And they don't have to track down fire, they don't have to track down sheriff, they don't have to try and track down their different approvals. And event planners for the last two months have thanked us for the process, they think it's more streamlined, and we review all of their events that are coming up in the next month and a half. If they've got two events, or if they've got five events, we review everything, and then they're set.
I have one more question, back up at the top of the page, too. Anticipate attendance in excess of three hundred. I almost feel like that should be two hundred people.
Is there a reason for it?
Two hundred people, and it's a lot of people and cars and, you know.
Mike, you got some comments on that? Or are you just shifting gears? Okay.
I think, I think two hundred.
I'm going to ask Deputy Chover to come up, because the sheriff's department sort of has an unwritten policy about crowd control.
Because if you're talking about some of the events, I'll call them parties, or receptions, or whatever, two hundred people parking on county roads, I mean, that's a lot of cars. I don't know, I think that's a little high.
Deputy Chover, for the record, Harold Chover. The benchmark that Lieutenant Garner had set prior to him being out on medical leave is one that he's used, and he's done these for years. He's looking at about a three hundred, because of some of these events are held on private property, and they don't actually affect the county. But one of the benchmarks he's looking at is three hundred personnel and/or alcohol involved. If there's alcohol involved, minimum two deputies. So we have a recommendation that we put to each one of the event planners that come up, if there's three hundred people or more, or, now, if it actually is going to affect a roadway, and I don't care if it's fifteen people or twenty people, and if it's going to shut down a road or affect traffic, then yes, we're going to make the recommendations we need to on that.
And that's my concern, and you may be having a reception, or a birthday party, or whatever, on private property, but they're going to be parking on county roads and impacting county roads, that's why I just think the number should be lower.
But Sarah, if they're not, they would be exempt because they're not charging admission, they're not renting booze, they may be blocking roads or right-of-ways, but you're not going to know that until after the thing is hit on. So birthday parties and weddings and things like that, I don't think this doesn't address, this doesn't address those kinds of things, those are...
And I have to say, from the five K point of view, and I know who you were talking about, and we have four going on, on the eleventh of October, all throughout the county. Logistically, it makes it a nightmare, as Mr. Davis said, for us, just try to find the manpower to cover all those blocks and details. But when it comes down to traffic control on that issue, we have to have the manpower. It's, once we say that we're going to commit to it, we have to find the manpower, and that's where we're coming up short.
Well, are we going to address it another time, the impact, and the impact, as you say, that aren't charging admission, but they do impact neighborhoods? Are we going to try to address that at another time?
Well, that was, that was one of my questions, was, you know, this is an outdoor events ordinance, and Wayne, you may want to talk to that. I don't know. What, how did y'all look at that?
If this is the wedding issue, I don't think that the outdoor events ordinance is directed at that. I mean, I think when you, the lower number you get, Commissioner Commander mentioned two hundred people, I'm sure that that would then bring that into play. But that's something that I think when we were drafting this, this was really, I think our thought process was more about the five Ks and the things like that, but it potentially could. If the event is big enough, it could merge into that issue.
I think that's a, yeah, that's a, I don't know if that may be a separate issue, or because then you get down into a lot of...
Because if you read the outdoor events, it definitely specifies a location, it just says an event of this size, and I'm, you know, there are weddings we have on the beaches and things like that, but so...
Of course, they're covered by the beach activities.
Right, right.
I have a question for Deputy Chover. Harold, you indicated that, if I misunderstood, you correct me, Danny has set the three hundred, and did I understand you say you'd have one deputy for these three hundred people?
No, sir. When it reaches the threshold of three hundred is when we recommend, no matter what type of event it is, a minimum of two deputies. And if alcohol is being served, no matter what the number, then we have two deputies, just because the alcohol...
Two deputies for three hundred drunks.
Well, we, three hundred is the count for the event to have two deputies. If there's alcohol involved, then we take that on a case-by-case. If we know it's going to be a wine event, and there's going to be three hundred people, then I may recommend four. Or if it's going to move from event to event, the one we were talking about, it's going to go to different locations on thirty A, we've already talked with Sammy Sanchez about, he may want to find out what the capacity is for each one of those establishments, make sure we don't go over max capacity.
Well, I've always advocated for officer safety.
Yes, sir.
You know, you put what you need out there for the worst-case scenario, and you hope for the best.
Yes, sir.
Because you sure don't want to get shorthanded when some bust loose, as you well know, and I've been there, had to deal with it, so...
Another issue with the five K is people, ninety percent of the people that sign up for five Ks do it the morning of. So they may expect two hundred, but they're going to end up with seven, eight hundred, a thousand, and that's just an issue that we've run into as well.
I guess I have one more question, not of you, Harold, but, okay, for receptions and things, if they're going to serve alcohol, is there a requirement for a deputy to be at those events? Because at the justin's day, a dangerous, at a, let's say, fifty-year anniversary, a whole bunch, you know, three hundred drunks, as it is, three hundred drunks at a race, I mean, you know, is there some provision to make sure there's a deputy that has been hired for those events?
For outdoor events, our committee reviews it, and the sheriff's department makes a recommendation to the event planner, and...
Okay, I think, one thing, Sarah, you're talking about is, most of those types of anniversary reunions and weddings are held on private property in homes. And so I think that that maybe needs to be addressed under a separate ordinance, because I think this is mainly for, like you said, the wine festivals, the art shows, the thing, but when you get into the private birthday parties and private things, then you get into a whole nother set of issues.
I'm all in favor of them, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm just saying that we have to think of safety of the neighborhood and the people.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think you could come up with some things for that.
The majority of events that we are permitting and reviewing are runs and festivals, concerts and festivals.
Just to be clear, if there's a wedding reception at my house, and there's going to be two hundred and forty people, but they're going to be parking up and down Petcoth and Road, or Coy-Burgess Loop, then it would, under this ordinance, I would be required to get a permit, because it would block roads and right-of-ways. So just, I mean, you're right, Commissioner, we do need to go in and make a more specific ordinance for those kinds of parties, but there are situations where this ordinance would cover and would require a permit.
But you wouldn't know that until, the thing is, you're not going to know that until everybody shows up for the wedding, and then starts parking in neighbor's yards, and then you get a call, so that...
We're going to have to communicate with those folks who plan those things, and say, "Look, you know, we need to start talking about, when you plan something on private property, if it's going to have this kind of effect," especially the last one, you know, any activity that would hinder the flow of traffic, then we're going to have to communicate with them.
I think maybe that the thing you set up is a really good venue, maybe you set it up for wedding planners and/or people who are holding weddings and reunions and such, and then sit down with them and kind of work up a...
And the vast majority of those are very...
A review of, yeah, of what they're doing.
All, they're going to park on their own properties, not on...
So that at least the sheriff and everybody know that there's going, you know, that, you know, that Sarah Commander's having a whoop-down at her house, you know, get down, and...
Hey, when Florida wins again, we'll throw a party.
That's right.
And one thing, Commissioner...
I do have one last question, but go ahead.
Part of this process, we will be designing a specific outdoor event webpage, which will have access to the ordinance, it will have access to the applications, it will have sample site and traffic flow patterns for them to use, because the sheriff's department and fire department require that. So it will be a very informative, user-friendly page.
Okay, I noticed one thing, too, that y'all are going to take the calendar, tell me about the calendar.
What page are you on, Ms. Chover?
Well, I think I'm on page...
Page two.
Page two, where, yeah, something about a calendar, it's not coming up, but...
Okay, what we had was, we had a calendar of events, and apparently, a lot of the event planners misunderstood, and they would submit a calendar list of their events for the year in January, and then a lot of them were not coming back and getting those events permitted, and we had no details about how many, how long, music, alcohol, so, and we'd have comments from some event planners that the calendar of events really wasn't helpful, it wasn't helpful to the committee. We are still asking them to submit us a list, which will help me schedule the review committee each month, knowing how many events we have coming up. But they misunderstood, because the ordinance clearly states that the fee was a hundred dollars per event. They thought they paid a hundred dollars at the beginning of the year for calendar events, and that was it.
And then they had ten events.
And then they'd have twenty-five or thirty events.
Twenty-five or thirty events, okay.
And so that was misunderstood, because the ordinance already clearly stated that it was one hundred dollars per event. So we're taking that out of there, but we have talked to all the major event planners for the major entities, the large resorts, and they're still going to give us, we are going to, we're going to give them a uniform list, because we're getting different types of lists, and some were more informative than the other, so we're going to give them a template and ask them to use that. And it'll still give us a calendar list, but they will have to get permitted for each event.
Okay, let me ask you this, too, and maybe the deputy as well. You know, let's say somebody comes in on the same day, and they, you know, there's a run, and they all, this is kind of what happened last time, they all want to have the same, they all want to have a run on the same weekend, the same day, and then they all start jockeying, "Well, I was here first, well, my events, you know, been here," and all that kind of thing. Do you have any mechanisms where we're going to say, "Okay, two events on thirty A, max per day," or anything like that?
We have to take those on a case-by-case. The way the sheriff's department is set up for outdoor events is, we have a power details computer system, where once the event is loaded, deputies sign up for it.
Okay.
We only have, and we've got certain regulations within the sheriff's department that allows them, they have to have so much sleep before they do an event or working off-duty detail.
Right.
That being said, with the events we've had just this last year, I know in one month, there was a hundred and forty-three details that we couldn't cover. So if we've got that many, I literally have to prioritize and figure out which one we can do, and we've had success with some of the vendors of actually rescheduling or modifying their event, because we did not have the manpower to support it.
And I'd like fire to give their input on this also, when we have multiple events.
Good morning, Commissioners Ryan Crawford, South Walton Fire District. I echo what both these folks have said, it's critical that we are involved in the planning process for the events, not only for the event to be, you know, safe for the folks that are participating in the event, but also from just an emergency response standpoint, for us to be able to access roads and buildings and everything else that the general public have. So I guess from our perspective, that's mainly what we're looking for.
Okay. Well, then, do y'all want to just kind of work it out among yourselves about the multiple events, or do you want to put something in an ordinance that says, you know, if you do that, though, then you're going to get a lot of people coming in at one time to try to get on the calendar, but what do you think about that?
In my opinion, Commissioners, if we allow them to send us a calendar in advance, like Ms. Carrie's talking about, even though we may not actually, we make it a minimum of forty-five days, but they can go out farther, it would end up being a first-come, first-served, to the best of my knowledge, just by who gets the event in. And in my opinion, we're running out of weekends in the summer, there's just too many events and not enough weekends in a year.
Exactly, and they all want to have them, yeah, yep. So that's just a, I'm throwing that out for a suggestion, and...
Hey, first come, first served, I mean...
First come, first served.
Make them come in and get that permit faster, won't it?
Yeah, yeah, but then it will, you know, what will happen is, everybody will swarm in at once, and then y'all will be swarmed, but I...
Well, I think, I think it will actually help us, I can't speak for fire, but I know from our point of view, the farther out we know, the better chance I have of manning that event. And the farther out I know that this weekend is booked, if someone comes up and says, "Hey, I want to have this event," and they look on a calendar, they can see that thirty A is already tied up, and they won't waste their time or their energy trying to set up an event. Hopefully, we can avoid that.
Okay, yeah, and maybe start telling the people in your meetings that, "Look, you know, we're going to get to the point where we can only handle two, one or two, so get your, first come, first served, get your, if you know you're going to have a run next year, get your information in, get on the calendar and..."
Agreed. So when do you want our comments back to you, before the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am, if you just give us comments back by the next week or so, and then we'll compile those, and then bring it back, and we'd like to begin the advertising process at the next meeting.
Do you want to go ahead and schedule the public hearing for the next meeting, or wait till we get a new draft?
My challenge preference. Let's go and schedule it. If we have some things we're still working on, we can continue it, I suppose, but we can go ahead and get it scheduled and ready to go.
So with the motion...
And we've had some other comments from some other people that we've talked to this morning, and we're going to be meeting with them as well, and they're going to speak next, I believe, but we have some outside people we're going to be working with, too, to try to address some concerns that they have.
So we would need a motion and a second and a vote to schedule a public hearing?
So moved.
Oh, at the next meeting, I assume?
Next meeting, which will be October the twelfth up here. Was that good or what?
Have it up here or down there?
Oh, that was November.
We need to have it down there. October twenty-eighth is the next meeting down there.
Yes, October twenty-eighth, nine AM, in South Walton.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, see, we're switching meetings, because of the, no, that's in November.
I thought, but it's at four o'clock, right?
Because our next board meeting is here at nine...
The times stayed the same, just the location changed.
Ooh, very confusing.
So we're doing four o'clock here, and nine o'clock there.
Correct.
That's the, there's a lot on that October twenty-eighth agenda that the public is going to want to be there, and nine o'clock is, they're going to have to...
We can change it whenever you want to change it.
You can change it now if you want to.
I mean, I think it needs to...
Want to change the first one in November, then?
No, I think it needs, I think the October twenty-eighth needs to be at four o'clock, and then the October fourteenth needs to be at nine AM.
Planning, did y'all advertise?
Yes, we had, we had items that have to be after five PM because of state statute.
Everybody advertised for that date.
For the...
For the first meeting in October.
Well, we can still, you can still do the second one at four o'clock if you want.
Just do them both at four o'clock?
Yeah, because, yeah, that's...
That'd be better.
And you're going to remind us of this, right? Do we need that in the motion?
No, 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 we have one motion on the, on the public hearing first, and then we can come back and do the second motion on changing the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe, on the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the twenty-eighth at four PM.
Correct. Make sure we know about that.
Now, on the consent agenda, you approved the meeting times and locations, so you'll need to have another motion to set the October twenty-eighth meeting at four PM.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What time is the October fourteenth?
Four PM.
Four, both at four o'clock.
Both at a four o'clock.
Now, if I don't show up, y'all call me.
Yeah, okay. Susan, would you take care of her, honey?
Take care of her, Susan.
Take care of her, Susan.
Thank you.
Gary, do you want something to say? All right.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, my name is Gary Vorbak, I'm attorney from Dustin, Florida, and I'm here representing the concerns of the prominence event area, and it's a little bit, prominence is developing an events area, and it's a little bit different from some of the concerns that's been expressed here today. We're aware that, you know, when you have your four K, or your five K, your wine festival, and those very large events, and they disturb the area, whether it be traffic and parking and things of that nature, size, but this, the plan, the business plan of this is to have events very often, and, because it's part of a commercial area, and they may have movies, they're going to have a big screen out there, heck, they may even show ballgames or something like that, and have cookouts and different things, and it's obviously there to generate, generate business for the commercial area there, too. So we don't fit this mold, but we could be captured by this net, and they can't plan these things forty-five days in advance. And some of these events may be done up three or four days in advance, and so they learn what to make the success of the commercial area and what works. And so forty-five days in advance would be almost prohibitive for this type of event area. Now, so we've been asked, we asked to Mr. Dice about it, and he said he'd work with us, and we have a meeting, try to set up a meeting, and do it rather quickly with the time schedule you've all just set. But we wanted to express our concerns, is not every event is these big monster events, and there's going to be some of them, and they just can't comply with the forty-five days. So we just want to express our concerns.
Three hundred, two hundred comes in?
Well, and the trouble with that is, if it's three hundred, and we, let's say they show a movie, and there's three hundred and ten people show up, they go, and somebody's out there counting them, and are they in trouble? Because we don't expect three hundred, but it just happened to be...
Sammy, are you going to be out there counting?
Well, no, I think one thing, too, is, if you look at, you look at the movie, at the things that are kind of inner resort-related, like the movies and the kids, you know, things like that, productions and the, you know, those are not the problem. It's when y'all have a yard sale, or a, you know, car show, or an art show, or something...
Five K or no?
Yeah, that brings all these people in, I think that's what they're all looking at, because most of the people that go to those movies, hopefully, are people who walk, you know, they go, they'll be out on the lawn, like the seaside, like the roses and
And it's like a T and D, that's the whole idea, the walking community, and to have all that. So, it kind of goes to make all these people to jump through these hoops, it's kind of anti-T and D. But I understand when you have a five K and you're going to have fifteen hundred people, that's a whole different ballgame. So, we'd like to work on the language to try to, we don't want to include those people in the net.
Right, right. I think, I think the, you know, the inner resort, you know, I don't know what you, you could term them something, inner resort amenity offered by the resort, a move, you know, the movies on Thursday nights, or the what have you, no big deal, because I don't, you know, people aren't going to drive down the beach unless you're showing, you know, something really good.
But then you're going to have to be responsible to the, I mean, the fire department's still going to have to be made aware of what's going on. The sheriff's department, in case you're serving alcohol, it's still going to, I mean-
Well, there's no problem notifying them, notifying them, but the forty-five days ahead of, planning it forty-five days ahead of time is just, it just really, it causes the business plan to not function.
Well, I think what'll happen is, once you get out there and you, you've got your PR person, and, you know, you've plugged the calendar in, I mean, all that's going to fall into place, I think, within the first year. So, you know, don't you think?
Well, hopefully, but Wayne said we're going to work on, so we're going to work on it diligently between now and the-
No, no alcohol, though, please.
No alcohol?
Gary, just for my edification, where is prominence? I'm trying to place it.
Prominence is west of Alice Beach, Water-
Water Sound.
Yeah, yeah.
It was the place that had, I called it a moat. It had a moat out front.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a DRI, and it's, it's being completed and being redeveloped.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Passes down to Tina.
Any other comments?
No alcohol or movies?
Carrie Thiemann again. I did want to point out, we have been working very well every month with our event planners for the large entities, the Seascape, the Sanduson, the seaside. And we don't permit each individual movie night. They normally have a series, and we permit the entire series of Wednesday night movies, or Wednesday night concerts. And there have been several events that South Walton Fire just pointed out to me, that have come up at the last minute. We're going to be small in nature and not affect any traffic or fire life safety, and they, they call me or send it to me, I email the committee, and we make the determination that a permit is not required. So, we do take these on a case by case, and if it's going to be a movie night for twenty people with no traffic, we don't require a permit.
Okay, thank you. Wayne?
Mr. Chairman, our next item is a QJ, the next two items are QJ items.
Anyone who anticipates testifying or speaking before the board on any quasi-judicial matter, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Anybody have any ex parte contacts, anyone regarding any quasi-judicial matter? Anyone have any objections to any of the notices that have been provided for today's hearings?
No.
Mr. Dice, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Davis. This is a request to amend the PUD for habitat buyout. Highland Park at Blue Mountain Beach, I'll ask Brian Underwood, our planner, to come up and give a brief overview. You've had this at your last meeting, I believe it was continued until this meeting.
Brian?
Good morning, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is a major development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering Corporation, requesting approval to amend the PUD for habitat buyout on lots one twenty-six through one forty-three, and to install a ten-foot wide pedestrian walkway as platted on approximately 1.48 acres, with future land use of traditional neighborhood development. Project is located approximately three-quarters of a mile west of County Road eighty-three and CR thirty-eight intersection on Gulfview Circle. There are no known code violations at the subject property, unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the project will be consistent with the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code when the comments and conditions stated below are met. First condition, all comments stated above are to be addressed. Secondly, habitat buyout fee in the amount of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents will be due at the time of replating of affected lots. A replat of the Highland Park at Blue Mountain Beach Phase Two, lots one twenty-nine through one forty-three, would be required following approval of this request. And lastly, all necessary permits must be obtained prior to initiation of construction. We have David Smith with Interlight here as well.
I have a question for you, just for my edification. What is the habitat buyout fee? What do we use that for?
It, it goes into a special fund, and we would have to ask Scott Keraway exactly what that money is allocated toward.
You know-
It's into the Habitat Preservation Fund, which has, which has over a million dollars in it right now. However, the code is not real clear on what it can or should be used for, so I think that we need to figure that out. It does have a little bit of language in there, but, yeah, it's, it's a fund, I think, that was primarily intended to, when you take these out, it's like wetlands, when you take wetlands out, you have to create them somewhere else.
Right.
So, land purchase, what have you. So, that's my understanding of it. Isn't that your understanding of it, Wayne? I don't think any, I don't think we've ever spent any money on anything from that fund, as far back as I can remember.
Yeah, the million dollars, I didn't realize there was a million dollars, but I didn't know that.
Ken, Ken Pridgen tried to get it, but, you know, we took it.
On a side note here, could you kind of look at that and bring it back to us and tell us, hey, yeah, he only wanted seven hundred, and that was for, you know-
Yes.
And he says he gave it back.
He did.
Well, because we couldn't get that, that purchase, but we need to, we, that's, I was going to bring that up, too. We need to figure out, Mr. Attorney, could you-
Yes, ma'am. Be happy to come back with you, what could be used for, and what other counties have done.
Thank you, sir. Now, then, back to the, the hand.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Tell me why the planning staff is in favor of this.
This is an acceptable allowance under the provisions in the Land Development Code. It's my understanding that when this project was originally approved for development order, habitat buyout was, would not have been allowed due to the threshold on the size of the development. The language has been changed, so now, based on the parcel size, this habitat buyout would be allowable. So, it's, meets the code criteria.
And also, I believe, in the, on the plans, the habitat area is also a footpath, which kind of conflicts with the preservation issue and having a footpath through it, or a path, sort of contradictory.
Now, I just, I have some questions for the engineer, but Mac, do you have?
Yes, the topography of this group of lots is probably about a thirty to forty percent slope, and you just can't build what is platted without some regrading, and that regrading would occur in preservation areas, and presently, that preservation is shown on the plat, not to be disturbed. So, it's just, it's an engineering problem.
Well, yeah, there's a twenty-foot drop from the, I went out there and looked at-
It's a steep slope.
Yeah, there's a twenty-foot drop. In fact, if it snowed, you could probably ski down it, but, but it is. It's a twenty-foot drop, and-
And when this was originally finished, and went through the DO inspection process, there was a mulch path in this area, but this project was originally developed, originally approved, or first approved, in two thousand and four. And now, they're getting to the point where the base has been reset on these lots, they're starting to develop these lots now, and they're getting to that section of the, of the development, and it just can't be done like it shows on paper.
Okay. Here from the applicant.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering Corporation, and I would like to expand on the reason why we're here. We're actually before you this morning to correct two issues. The first issue Mac presented was, we want to fulfill the intent of the plat, is the area is shown as a ten-foot pedestrian path, but it's also shown in preservation. So, what we're proposing to do is to construct the ten-foot pedestrian path, which will be a benefit for the homeowners within Highland Park, and we can't do that in the preservation area. But the main reason we're before you this evening, as Mac also mentioned, as well, is the lots are, are steep in this area, and I'd like to point to this exhibit that's in your, in your packet. All the water flows from Gulfview Circle downhill, and it's very steep. And currently, there's no stormwater management to prevent the water from flowing to the upper row of lots, to the lower row of lots. So, what you're going to have is the water freely flowing from this upper area down to the lower area, creating flooding and creating a drainage nuisance that flows through this area. So, another thing we are proposing are two concrete ditches that will run in this area to divert the water to the stormwater management facilities, the other ditch is in this area here, and it will take it to the stormwater management facilities that are currently in place where it was designed to go. We're just helping it get there without running through this lower row of lots to actually get where it's intended to go. So, we are here before you this morning to, again, correct two issues, and I would like to mention, when Highland Park was approved, it was approved with a requirement for nine point two three acres of preservation. It provided, it currently provides nine point three three acres of preservation, and we're before you this evening requesting less than a quarter of an acre. So, it would be point two four six acres that we would request to buy out to correct these two issues. So, now, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Yeah, just a question is, okay, you're going to, how deep is that ditch going to be, and is that going to be, is it going to be an actual ditch, or is it going to be piped?
It's going to be a concrete ditch.
Concrete ditch?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how deep is it going to be?
For detail, we had a foot and a half.
Maybe a foot and a half?
Yes, ma'am.
Foot and a half, okay. And so, the water's going to run down in that, and then run off to both sides, and then, and then where? My, my thinking is, what happens with those lots on the downslope, because they're low as well? Are they going to catch all this water flowing down there?
No, ma'am, the ditches would prevent the water from flowing onto their property, and would divert it east and west to the stormwater management facilities, to the roadways.
Okay. And then, I see you're going to put a retaining wall in?
Yes, ma'am.
Where the, where the gray, how high is that retaining wall?
We have a, on your exhibit, we have a detail on the bottom right side, it's about five feet, four to five feet on either side.
Okay, so it's four to five feet on either side, and then, is the path going to be, it looks to me like the path will actually be sloped, it'll be a path like this?
Just a very gentle cross slope.
Okay, okay. And then, the area in the middle will be common area for people to walk through and-
And I did want to mention, that area, we are not proposing to buy out, that is to, that is to remain.
Right. And then, the two blue, the, the two blue things on the both sides, would those still be there, or what? The two blue, you know, they, there's two long skinny things on the side. They look like easements, or I can't really tell if they're-
Yes. Those, that, those would be bought out as well, and the reason is, the swell would need to run through those areas to convey the water to the roadways.
Okay, okay. And this isn't, is this a closed basin?
As far as Highland in its entirety, this portion is not. This flows to the stormwater management facilities.
Yeah, but do, where do the stormwater management facilities outfall? Where do they go, when they fill up?
There's various pop-offs around the project that allow those facilities to pop off, but, you know, this was already built-
Right, right.
And it's been there for some time.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but, you know, since we're looking at such severe drainage issues, I just wondered about this one. So, how wide is the path?
The path, it's ten feet.
Ten feet wide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is it going to be, what material is it going to be?
Be mulch.
Mulch?
Yes, ma'am.
Won't that, won't that wash away down into that ditch?
Well, the retaining walls are on either side of the path, so the mulch will be contained in the path area.
Okay.
The ditch is on the uphill side of the path to, to capture the uphill lots, to keep the water from the lots when they're built, from going to the path. So, it'll, it'll capture that water to keep it from flowing down to the path to erode the mulch.
Okay.
David, I have a question. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I think that's all the questions.
Looking at, if you want to flip it up, so you, all right, there, you got your primary thing coming through basically the center. You got, one ditch is going to take water towards Emerald Beach, and the other will take it around to Emerald Beach on that side. What about these lots that are located south of there? Where is the water running there and being maintained, or?
Yes, sir, it'll flow.
Because it all flows downhill.
Yes, sir, it'll flow down to Emerald Beach Way, and then there's inlets in Emerald Beach Way that will cap, that capture the water and then take it to the retention ponds.
As inlets? Explain that.
It's curb inlets in the curbing-
Okay.
That the water flows into. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, last item on our, on our agenda is West Shore Phase Two plat, and we have a request to table that one.
entertain a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioner, before you adjourn, let me announce the special meeting, just so we have it right. Commissioners, we'll be meeting in a special session, special executive session, for the purpose of discussing the collective bargaining negotiations with the Walton County Firefighters Union. Those who will be present will be Jerry Copeland, the union, excuse me, the commission's chief negotiator. Commissioner Kenneth Pridgen will not be present. Commissioner Cindy Meadows will be present, Bill Enfeld, Sarah Commander, and Bill Chapman. Mr. Sunday and Mr. Jones are also members of the negotiating team, they will also be present, and Sid Noyes and Mark Davis from the county attorney's office will be present. There will be no one else present. So, now we can adjourn and go into the special meeting.
Okay, we'll adjourn the regular meeting and go into special session.
Both, that Mr. Pridgen could not be present.
Said he was leaving.